Probably the time has come to pass for the Monday, April 2nd, 2018, regular council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Vialobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
I'm present. I ask that we all please stand for invocation. It's going to be led by Reverend Sadeed Richardson from First Baptist Church located at 401 North Genesee Street, across from the post office. Immediately following will be the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're going to ask someone from the audience to lead us in that one. Thank you.
Amen. Teddy Roosevelt was a man who had a great reputation for being frank and direct. And he coined in the year 1900 that no community is healthy where it is ever necessary to distinguish one from another because he is honest. Moreover, it is not enough that a public official should be honest. No amount of honesty will avail if he or she is not also brave and wise. As we come to pray this morning, let us be reminded that leadership hinges upon these three great precepts: wisdom, courage, and honesty. Three things very simple until they become very inconvenient. Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our beloved city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with love and restraint. Grant us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of both your authority and citizen trust. Guide us to be the honest, courageous, and wise leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us. And to treat all persons, no matter how weak or how strong, how poor or how rich, how young or how old, from the greatest of title to the least of these, to serve all of your children justly with reverence and respect. Dare would renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of every human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and your love. Amen.
We're going to have our two county ward commissioners lead us in prayer. Commissioner Mayor Ross Cunningham and Diane Hugh. I'm sorry, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our brief mayor's comments. Thanks again, everyone, for coming tonight. This Saturday, April 7th, at 9:00 a.m. at Bonnie Brook Golf Course, the city will have a community hearing to discuss the proposed 2019 budget. I invite all members of the public to come by this Saturday at the Bonnie Brook Golf Course, starting at 9:00 a.m. Additionally, next Monday, April 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00, there will be a committee of the whole on the proposed 2019 budget here at City Hall. Again, April 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at Waukegan City Hall. I want to say a big shout out to our traffic division, Police Department's Traffic Division located at Window 2 on the first floor of Waukegan City Hall. The Traffic Division was opened this past Saturday in order to serve the public who cannot come to City Hall on the weekdays to purchase early bird city stickers. Chief Wallace, Lieutenant Beach, Sergeant Roush, Supervisor B. White, and all and the entire staff, I want to say thank you to all for a great service. As a reminder, you can purchase city stickers at the regular $45 price at the Traffic Division from Monday through Friday at 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. You can also purchase city stickers online on our website. World Autism Awareness Week. Today is the final day of the World Autism Awareness Week. These are incredible individuals in our community that refuse to let autism let them, limit them. So let us all take a moment to recognize Autism Awareness Week, which the final day is today. Thank you. Upcoming events. Uh-oh. Waukegan Fire Department, hockey game. The Waukegan Fire Department takes on the Gurnee Fire Department in a charity hockey match on Saturday, April 14th. Check the city calendar for more details. Chief, Fire Department, I know you're not playing. Waukegan Public School Staff and Administration will take on the Harlem Wizards in a charity basketball game at the Dog Pound on April 14th. Upcoming events. The Genesee Theater will be hosting upcoming shows. Daltrey is performing on Friday, April 13th. Jay Leno is here Saturday, April 14th. Comedian Joe Coy is sold out for Sunday, April 15th. At this time, I'll be asking, I'm sorry, the city of Waukegan has been meeting with, coming with Edison, ComEd, in order to partner on a number of great projects. Carlo Cavellaro is here from ComEd to speak about streetlight LED upgrades, tree cutting, and energy efficient assessment. Mr. Carlo, thank you, sir.
You're the mayor, Alderman. Carlo Cavellaro, I'm the external affairs manager for Commonwealth Edison. A little bit of history, if you don't mind. So in 2016, ComEd worked with General Assembly, the environmental organization, Sexolone, and a number of other partners. We passed what we called the Future Energy Jobs Act. The acronym, of course, we love acronyms, is Fija. Exactly, thank you. So the most important part of that from the experience is it added a couple of, you know, energy efficiencies. So we increased energy efficiency from $250 million in the rate program to up to $400 million all the way out through 2030. And we're predicting that this will be about a $4 billion savings on consumers from the benefits of those energy efficiency programs when they're fully implemented. The key reason why you're here tonight is the public sector benefits that are provided. Previously, the programs did not allow for municipal buildings or local government schools, et cetera, participating in energy efficiency. That's changed. I think the mayor started calling me last early, I think you were in office for a week, when you started asking about the programs under Fija. Since then, we've had several meetings. I know the energy assessment team has been out, where we send out building engineers to basically work with your staff to review all the buildings, facilities, and find every way. We produce an entire report that shows you all the opportunities for it. So for new construction or modeling, other enhancements you want to take on, or additions for those facilities, they use it with an energy efficiency thought in mind. The other thing, from a community-wide basis, there's a huge focus on renewable energy for the environmental movement and otherwise, the focus, a large focus on solar energy, not just solar on your home. There's the community solar program. So many people live in apartments or rent homes or condos. It gives them access to being, basically buy a share in a solar facility that gives them credit on their own bill. That's community solar program. And then, of course, the LED streetlights. So over the next five years, ComEd will be replacing all of our city owns, all of our own streetlights, which you then rent, we refer to those as Dust Dawn. Waukegan has about 31. We just did the survey of all the lights through towns the past few weeks. So we now know you have right about 3,100 lights. So we have a program that's going over multiple years. So this year, we have 1,000 lights allocated to be swapped out within the city. We've been working with staff to figure out where to start, how to move through. The planning phase will go through. We will have, we get installs in May. Once they complete, we will update the bills. And you can see, when it's all done over your entire annual bill, it's 100% of lights are changed, it could be as significant as a 60% reduction in your costs. Reason I qualify that is because it depends which light we're changing for which. I know from past experience, we did this as a pilot program in some smaller communities. And what we were determining is everything up to a 400 watt, it used to be high-pressure sodium lights, we've been able to change out with roughly the 50 watt LEDs. Because of the CRISPR Cooler light that they provide and they're more focused, they work more efficiently. Not only on energy, but I mean in the light that they cast. So with that, when you're dropping, normally we would allocate what we call a 70 watt class for your brighter installations over 200 watts. In many cases, the entire towns were changed out to just simply using the 53 watt, the 50 watt class LED. So that's the only reason why I qualify what the savings would be. We'll get those, once the installations are, we'll do them in phases, of course, with the 1,000 lights, we'll update the bill for those. And we'll continue working with staff on those. And the other project we didn't mention is the tree trimming. We're looking at trees. I know, I was at the meeting earlier, we were concerned about some dead trees. For those that are near the power lines or the parkways that are trapped, we have certain programs that are available. We're looking to assess, working with the city, the arduous, to assess the tree population you have for those that fit within our program so we can partner on getting those away from our lines and, you know, out of the area. Those are done by budget basis and then by priority. So we'll begin, we'll do that assessment and we'll begin that work with the facility assessments and lights. Could be pretty good here for us.
Well, I really want to thank you on that. And I think, and I know this might be the next question, where are we going to start at? If I'm not mistaken, I think we're starting on four, five, you say it out, man.
Four, five, six, seven.
Four, five, six, and seven for that first 1,000.
And what's the timeline on that 1,000 being completed?
So the work groups, so right now, the work is being divided between whether it is contractors or in-house.
Okay.
We're trying to stick with the ComEd crews, obviously weather dependent. Once we start, so there's a variation. So our guys would work off and on. We'll get it done in a matter of a few weeks, though, even.
Okay.
I just don't know if the contractors or each one of us have the time, they'll start at one end, install the 1,000, be done. If it goes over, if it's split up, it may be over four to six weeks.
Okay.
I'll have that scheduled. I wish I would have had it today. Sorry I don't, I should have it in the next couple of weeks.
No problem. I just wanted to give you all of them, when you start seeing these trucks in their prospective wards as to why, and the residents within the city give you a call, you know the reason why.
You'll see if they'll set up, they'll, obviously just cones, it's just a lift truck, but they'll be working in teams. And they're very efficient. So they can do as many, depending on the crew strengths and the allocation, they can do a couple hundred in a week.
All right. Well, thank you, Carlo. Really appreciate it. Any questions from the Alderman?
All right.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anytime.
All right. Take care. Those are the mayor's comments. We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, second amendment made, to approve regular meeting minutes from March 19th, 2018. Any questions? Alden's favor.
Hi.
Most passing carry. Audience time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All right. Three minutes. I've got the timer. And the first one. John Thames.
My name is John Thames, and the resident at 9:30 North River Road. My name is John Thames. I'm a resident at 9:30 North River Road, in the adjacent property owner to the River Glen development. I'd just like to make a few comments and ask a number of questions. I was over last week and saw a, what I would call, packing paper, a large brown paper in the windows of the model home. And it said, "Closed." I've called the, had some issues with the developer and garbage and things of that nature. And now this is coming up, this surety bond. And I'm really just trying to understand what's happening with this project. I've been watching this for the last four years. We thought it would be a failed project. It appears to be a failed project. And so, the questions. Who is the current property owner? Has the current owner discussed with the city a new development plan? Who is the developer? Could someone explain how the city and/or the property owner could switch out or substitute a new developer for another? Just trying to really understand what's going on here. What are the new development details? And this, to my knowledge, has not been publicly put out. So I'm asking. Have there been any plans approved through planning and zoning, through judiciary or city council at this point to complete the development? Have the utility issues been discussed with this potential new developer, specifically the natural gas lines? Or will this development contain dozens of more propane tanks? As residents, I'm speaking for a few others, we have strong concerns regarding the property density issues and the following of our newly passed ordinance that we fought for so hard for four years to get passed to make sure that we understand what the development is and that we don't have what we have currently, again, with the new developer. Very frustrating pulling into my driveway every single day for four years, looking at a failed development. Also, how does this potential new change affect the road surfacing that was promised to us on the north end? We got the roads done a couple of years ago, and now it's four years. We don't know. We're just waiting, you know, making sure we're not hitting every pothole.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Brother Blanks.
Black abolition, founding president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. First, I want to start out and extend our condolences on behalf of our organization to, first of all, Alderman, she lost her husband, so condolences to you and yours. Was here last city council meeting, and I kept referring to y'all as board members because I'm going between school board and here. And I brought up the issue of, brought up the issue of mob action charges in an educational environment. Today, I'm here to ask the board, or to ask the city council members to take into consideration at this time, take into consideration a moratorium on the charges of mob action in an educational environment. Last time I was here, I thought it was maybe about three or four students. But I've come to find out, to my displeasure, we have 11 of our students hit with mob action charges, many of which had never even had a criminal record until that day. So, I mean, that's a pretty hard hit on our students. And I think that is something to really consider. It's not the first time. It has happened before. But we need to draw the line in the sand because we do not want our children leaving school more with criminal records than they are leaving with their parents. So this is a gateway to the pipeline, the prison process that we do not want. And I'm asking you all to take that into consideration, to put a moratorium up until this more clearly defined on how mob action should, or if at all, should be used in a student environment. Let's stop this right now. We have that within our reach. I've talked to the state's attorney, I mean, I talked with State Representative Rita Mayfield. I'm trying to get some legislation in place statewide, but I'm appealing right here at home first. We can't have that. That's not something that we want. I talked with Jim Kearns out at Stevenson High School, to ask him how or if this had ever been applied. He said, "I've been here at this school at Stevenson for 25 years." He said he don't recall any of their students ever being hit with mob action. And that's not because they haven't had altercation as well. So we don't want it at Stevenson. We don't want it at Lincolnshire, I mean, in Hollapark. But we definitely don't want such a charge imposed here on our children. So I want you all to take that into consideration because that can also be, if, that's for any overzealous state's attorney, if we ever had one, that could be a field day for someone to come in and impose these charges. I don't even know why state's attorney would even approve such charges as this on our kids, or for that to be able to happen. So those are things that we want to keep in mind. Also, I want to make the announcement, we are moving forward. And if there are any parents whose students have been charged with mob action, we just as an organization, moving to see what we can do.
Thank you, Brother Blanks.
To make sure this don't happen again. Thank you.
Tierra Libertad? It's hard to figure out.
I am.
Buenas noches, honorable comité.
We're doing English and Spanish again. Good evening, city council.
Les quiero agradecer este tiempo que nos dan. Vengo en representación de la Asociación de Migrantes Tierra y Libertad.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight with the organization, Tierra y Libertad.
En representación de la comunidad y de los comerciantes.
And on behalf of the business owners and organizations in the community.
Con el fin de darle seguimiento.
With the intent tonight.
El evento llevado a cabo en la ciudad de Waukegan.
And as.
And the event, the Waukegan was held over here in Waukegan. Tuvimos, tuvimos el, tuvimos como anfitrión a nuestro mayor, Sam Canning.
And at the event, we had a community event, we were honored with the mayor's presence.
Quiero agradecer el gran apoyo de Susana Figueroa.
I want to personally thank Susana Figueroa.
El haber traído al mayor de Cuautla, Morelos, a Walter Tadeo Nava.
For the presence of the mayor from Cuautla, Mayor Tadeo Nava.
Con la buena fe de hermandad, Waukegan y Cuautla.
And with the good faith of Cuautla, Morelos, with Waukegan.
So the both city can become sisters.
And hopefully, we can, they can become a sister cities.
Con el propósito de intercambiar educación, cultura, y turismo.
With the purpose of exchanging of education, culture.
Turismo.
And tourism, sorry.
A lo mismo que el sector empresarial.
In addition to business.
Creemos que el hermandad miento con Toquio fue una decisión acertada, lo mismo que será hacerlo con Cuautla.
And just as the city, Waukegan did a sister arrangement with Japan. We would like to do the same a couple of years ago. We would like to see if it's possible with a Mexican community.
Ya que Cuautla cuenta con una amplia gama de servicios.
Because the town of Cuautla in Mexico has a lot to offer, we feel, and benefit of Waukegan residents.
Tiene 20,000, 20,000 norteamericanos viviendo en el estado de Morelos.
In fact, there's 20,000 U.S. citizens who currently reside there already.
Cuenta con el colegio Angloamericano, con Yonah de Kennedy y muchos otros colegios para dar educación a los norteamericanos y Morelos.
And they have the university there and a lot of other establishments.
Margaret, did you want to?
Yeah, so that's his, okay, we'll just, go ahead, continue on to my time.
Una.
Are you taking your time now?
Yes, it's my time now.
Una amplia, una amplia gama de empresas lo respaldan como Bayer, Abbott, Firestone.
So a lot of Fortune 500 corporations are located in Cuautla.
Así como los diferentes parques acuáticos.
And also water parks.
Sin dejar de mencionar su rica cultura.
In addition to the rich culture.
Con la buena fe de hermandad mientos con Cuautla.
With the purpose of brotherhood with the Cuautla community.
Dejaremos saber al mundo que Waukegan está a la altura de cualquier acuerdo internacional.
And we want to showcase some of the city of Waukegan at the international level.
Cabe mencionar que la ciudad de Cuautla tiene como ciudades Riverside, California, y Arlington, Washington, como ciudades hermanas.
And the public community already has sister city arrangements with other countries in the United States cities. And I just want to also add to publicly, you know, we have representatives from the Mexican community, organizations, business owners, all united to say, as he mentioned, thank you to our mayor for sincere hospitality. In addition to that, we want to thank Lake County, the Port District, Waukegan Library, the Park District Fieldhouse, the Waukegan Historical Society, the Sports Park, and the Chief Bridges, and as he mentioned previously, Susana. If there's any other city employees or instrumentals involved, once again, thank you for your time and hospitality. They were impressed with Waukegan. They're coming back, it's their first visit, and I think the community enjoyed it. Also, Mayor Ross Cunningham, our Lake County Commissioner, was present there. There was thousands in attendance. It was a great reception they had. We're going to go on now with, from the business community, Mexican business community, with Fernanda Juana, and also with Lupita, and Fernand will be translating for Lupita.
You're on here, too.
You're on here. Okay, we're going to start yours.
Good evening. I guess, I would like, we would like to make a history in Waukegan. I would like to introduce all these dancers. These are traditional dresses from Mexico. And we would like to open a dance club, a dance center, dance studio, and art for these kids so they can be busy. Right now, we rent in places and finally, we decided to open our own dancing center. We would like to make a history.
Good evening, all. Lupita and I will be talking about trying to support her in her new business venture. And I want to say, this is not a, excuse me, this is not a business, this is more like a cultural thing. So we would like to bring to Waukegan, not only culture, as you mentioned, businesses. Also, we'd like to bring tourists over here. And I think the community of Waukegan needs all this kind of stuffs. I think, you know, with the majority of Latinos over here, we would like to come and show you guys what we have from our country, especially when it comes to culture, or especially when it comes to folklore, dances. And I would love to see if we can be able to get a blessing from the City Fire Department to have this open in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. My name is Raúl Álvarez, I'm the president of the association. I'm a Waukegan citizen. All my kids have been born in Waukegan, has Alderman David also. And it's an honor for me. Thanks for your time. And we'd like to know, what's going to be the day, so we can, the next step, so we can see if Waukegan can become a sister city with Cuautla.
Right now, why don't we, I'll discuss with our corporation council, and we can go from there as to those steps are. Okay?
Thanks, sir.
No problem. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I have specialos.
Sepia.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Before we go there, I just want to say to these young people right here, thank you for coming out. You look beautiful today, don't we agree, Alderman?
You do. Gorgeous.
All right, thank you again, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. I'm sorry, sorry.
That's okay. I couldn't have asked for a better leeway to what I wanted to talk about. I was actually going to talk a little bit about a wonderful and diverse Waukegan-ism, which was, in one of the other meetings, was one of the many reasons why I picked Waukegan. I actually wasn't going to get into this as I came here tonight, but I had dinner at 17 North, and one of the ladies there reminded me why I picked Waukegan. She started talking about her wife, who's in the military and is actually going off and going off into service. And my husband and I picked Waukegan because of the diversity, and him and I are from the city. And him and I, about five years ago, adopted a daughter, and we have a little baby girl. And we, again, picked Waukegan because we appreciate the city and we appreciate the diversity that Waukegan brings. And along with diversity brings middle class, upper class, and lower class. And recently, my association, I'm a member of the fifth ward, Ann Taylor, and I'm a very thick thorn per se. She knows that. I'm sorry. Nine-four. I'm a big thorn per se. And I bother her a lot. But before, people bother Ann, they bother me, and it trickles up to Ann. And recently, my association wanted to put a fence in, and we go to get the fence, and we decided to do it up very nice. We decided to put up a nice fence. We didn't want to put up as a chain link fence because it welcomes you into your community. We decided to put up a wrought iron looking fence. And it's made out of commercial aluminum, and it's a ten thousand dollar fence. So I go to go get the permit, and can anyone guess how much this permit's going to cost me in the city of Waukegan? It's going to cost me four hundred and sixty dollars to get a permit. Now, the permit in Gurnee would cost me thirty dollars, the permit would cost me sixty dollars in Libertyville, it would cost me a hundred dollars in Green Oaks. But in Waukegan, this is going to cost me four hundred and sixty dollars. Well, how are people in Waukegan going to afford to do improvements? When we talk about people opening up a dance studio, how are common core people going to afford improvements? Again, I couldn't have asked for a better leeway into what I'm going to talk about. This is ridiculous for a fence permit. I am not building a house, I am not building an infrastructure, I am not Amazon, I am putting up a fence. And I am not even putting up a new fence, I am replacing a fence. This is probably going to kill my project. So I am asking you guys, what is going on with the cost? Since in the last year, property taxes have gone up, sales taxes have gone up.
Thank you.
And now permits have gone up, we need to figure out what's going on.
Correction, permits haven't gone up, sir.
They did.
No, they did not, but I'll talk to you offline, come and see me, and with the Alderman in there, the permits have not gone up, don't want to put that out there, they have not gone up. Thank you, sir.
Ralph Peterson, Jr.
I would like to speak on cell phone towers on private property close to residents. Mayor, you're breaking the law, you're walking a path of corruption. Research has shown me that the Park District owns property at Yeoman and Golf. Why not erect a tower there, and then that way, the monies would go back to the taxpayers. Why would you let the money go to a private citizen, considering you've raised taxes across the board? I view kickbacks by way of campaign contributions appear to be priority. The next item, gaming machines. Mayor, you're blanking the town with these one-armed bandits at an alarming rate, knowing it is the black community that falls prey at a much higher rate. I ask, do you have the ability to look slash see where all this will have the hardest impact further down the road? Again, I view kickbacks by way of campaign contributions, it's what's priority. Now, Mayor, also, I recall when you were campaigning, you were against liquor license, gaming machines, and car lots, and raising taxes. And I must say, since taking office, you did the opposite. Again, I say, kickbacks and campaign contributions is what seems to be important to you. Now, this last one, I, this last one, I strongly recommend that you put the South Side revitalization project back on the drawing board. And by not doing so, I can tell you for certain, you positively will not be re-elected. How dare you rob the poorest ward in Waukegan of better living conditions, and your reasons being, it was not your idea. And again, by not having kickbacks and campaign contributions in view, I would imagine that played a part in trashing the project. And I want it understood and to ring like church bells. I refuse to be silent while these acts take place, and just by you doing halfway right, just halfway. You won't see me, and you won't hear me, but you got to meet me, man, you got to meet me, thank you.
Thank you. Alonso Jenkins.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents and members of the audience. My name is Alonso Jenkins, and I would like to start off by acknowledging the City Clerk's Office for their professionalism and knowledgeable staff. My wife and I came down to the City Hall a couple of weeks ago to handle some business, and they were very helpful. City Hall's main hallway can be quite intimidating to residents, but it's nice to have the first office they see, the City Clerk's Office, with the City Clerk and staff greeting with such vibrants and joy. I applaud you and your office. Also, I would like to thank the mayor and City Council for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the CDBG stakeholders' participation panel. I look forward to working with the CDBG staff and Waukegan citizens to help develop and move Waukegan forward. So again, I thank you for the privilege and opportunity. Also, I would like to encourage certain outspoken residents to try to get involved with the committee or run for an office if you want to see change that you feel you aren't seeing. Instead of coming to the podium week after week complaining and verbally attacking certain elected officials, because we, the residents, are tired of it. We want to hear about ways to build our city, not words to destroy it. I was always taught, if you complain about a problem or bring up a problem, that you should have or help or find a solution that will make the problem better or solve it, instead of just pointing the problem out. If you have a problem with the parks, run for the Park District. If you have a problem with the school district, run for the school board. If you have a problem with no planning or new businesses going up in the city, get on the Planning and zoning committee. If you have a problem with housing or new development of low-income housing, try to get on the Housing Authority Board. If you have a problem with the Alderman or mayor, then run for their respective office. If you have a problem, then help me the solution, not just the habitual complainer every week after week. I was taught this in church, if you don't like the person that's in leadership, you always respect the office that person holds. Thus, we have to get back to a place of respect of offices and authority. If us, be the adults, can give or show respect, then how do we expect our children to show respect? As I take my seat, I just want to leave this quote in everyone's hearing. If you see a king or queen or your neighbor's crown crooked, go tell them in private, and don't announce to the world what you did privately. Thank you.
Diane, Diane Behr.
Diane Behr?
Good evening, my name is Diana Byerga, I am a member of this community, Waukegan. I have a child with autism, his name is Sir Ian Leroy. I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor Cunningham, for acknowledging today is National World Autism Day. We have a big community here with a lot of children with autism. The world lights it up blue today, I would love to see Lake County be a part of that next year, April second. When it's dark, possibly, we can all get a blue light bulb, put it on our porch, light it up blue, and it would just be a wonderful thing. I would love to, I'm an advocate for autism, there is a lot of programs that have been cut, a lot of support groups that are no longer going on. I would love to see those things back up, because we need to continue to build awareness and explain to, you know, teach the community what autism is, so that way, when our children are out, they're not singled out, they're not looked at, you know, like they don't belong, or other children don't know what's going on. So it's up to us as the parents to educate our children, let them know we're all different. There might be a child that, you know, can't speak or do the things that you do, let's extend the olive branch, let's try to help them, let's teach our kids. And, you know, it would stop a lot of bullying, a lot of, you know, it would just be a better environment. I just want to say thank you again for your time, and thank you for what you're doing in the community, I'm happy with what you're doing. Thank you for what you did at the library with clearing all the beds that people had, so that way the children can go back to the library and utilize these services. You're doing a lot of great things, and I applaud you. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Pitts.
I want to thank you for watching that baby so he can get to that microphone. Yeah, yeah, she was trying to get it to. Yeah, um, I guess I'll try to keep it short, but I guess I'm just concerned about Waukegan and its future and what's going on. I just feel like I've been moderating several Facebook pages for this area, and I'm, I'm still looking for more feedback as to what's happening. So I'm wondering if things are getting any better than when I was here maybe six months ago, or a year ago, or when I ultimately left, like seventeen years ago. So I still go through the town, there's lots of stuff that's been torn down, but I'm looking to see what's being built and what's going on. So I'm hoping you can provide some type of media as to what's going on. And it's, and it has to get beyond your Facebook page or something, it has to be distributed amongst the community. I guess my other issue is, is you're definitely having a major problem with your schools, because someone mentioned the school, the prison pipeline. But I'm looking at one school, and it's at the bottom fifteen of the state. So you have a school that's in the bottom fifteen of your state, and that's of two thousand sixty schools. So, and then many of your other schools are at the bottom, two hundred or bottom fifty of the state. So I'm trying to see what are you going to do about this? Because when people come, when people consider moving here, they're going to be looking at your school district. And they're not going to be saying, oh, that's somebody else's responsibility. They're going to be looking at you, and they're going to be looking at this board. And, I mean, my recommendation is that you create a subcommittee where both of y'all would come together and then discuss issues as to sharing resources, and whatever issues that would come up, building the community, addressing some of the poverty in the areas, and seeing how you can help each other. I definitely want to give my sentiments to this guy. I, it's, it's very antiquated that people will just have some fetish for throwing rocks, but they don't build, I don't see them building anything. I mean, it's, it seems like we got a bunch of leaders that just have this obsession with throwing rocks. I mean, I want to see these people in the community helping the people, giving food, giving clothes, you know, job fairs, you know, picking up trash. I mean, that's what I want to see these people doing, and like, all I hear is mouth.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Mayor, that concludes all the audience time.
Well, thank you, everybody, for tonight, and the audience time, and I. All right. We have item four, we have the information presented by the Honorable Lake County Board Member Mary Ross Cunningham and Diane Hewitt. Please come on up, I think there's a small presentation they have for us. I'm going to say, like I said, Mom and Diane, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We are here, Diane, Commissioner Hewitt, we are here to present, we're here for good stuff, not bad stuff, but we're Christian people, we love the Lord. And we love the Lord, we love everybody. So we are here to present a check for the handicap, for the City Hall handicap that the mayor requested, which is in the ninth district, the district I represent. And Diane and I serves on the committee, where the money come from, we hose it down. We bring, we bring plenty of money to the city of Waukegan. We have seven more checks that we have to take, and it's a lot of money. One of them, Vacco District, we be bringing to his district. So that's what we're doing for the Lake County Board, on the City, on the County Board, I was finished with the City Council, on the County Board. And we are happy to bring this here, like the young man said, Alonso said, you come for good things, not bad things. So you show where you was raised at home. And we looks out for the city of Waukegan, we looks out for North Chicago, we have a check for North Chicago. We looks out for these places that you put in, you will get it, because we serve there. Because we are fortunate to have a budget like we have, and that's why we bring the money where needed it, wherever needed it, that's why you bring it to us. So before I call up the mayor, Commissioner Hewitt, my partner, we said, what about Waukegan? She said, what about the second ward, district, she served the second district. So we looks out, we know where to need it.
Good evening, everyone, I just want to say how excited I am to bring this check to you. I look forward to watching the progress being made with this check, and have many more to come, thank you.
And, I'm sorry, you wanted to say something, Commissioner?
Yeah, and it's, where this come from, we have more, this is just getting started, for the, do your oppa check or whatever. But we will be bringing more back if we want to see this handicap ramp, because one day I might be handicapped, and I might need to come up in here. So, you know, hey, you call it like it is, I calls it like it is, believe me not.
What we are speaking of, right in front of our entryway here, if you notice, there are steps with a rail. We've, I personally watch, and I think all of us have, where some of our handicapped residents, or those who are handicapped, sometimes have to use their walker to go up those steps. So in talking with Mike Hewitt, myself, Bruce Kennedy, who's a facility manager for all of our properties, we have asked of how, what way we can make that more accessible to individuals coming into City Hall. And in talking with Mike Hewitt and Bruce Kennedy, this is one of the ideas. We then presented that to Commissioner, Commissioners Mary Ross Cunningham and Diane Hewitt, and they got on the phone with their Community Development Block Grant Department and say, well, we have some dollars can be set aside for the city of Waukegan, as have done for other, other city halls throughout the county. So we do appreciate you, we thank you, and I'm glad to know that there is more money where that is, where that, in that department. And I certainly have some people who will be making sure that we apply for those dollars, and that is the key to apply.
Amen, if you apply, you get it.
All right, so that's what it is, so we're going to bring it, this is a mock check, but the, we know the money is there.
It's coming in the mail.
It's coming.
It's already in the bank.
Yeah, so what we're going to do right now is, as our two commissioners, and I think Billy Durkin.
Yeah, Billy couldn't be here tonight, he sent his blessing to the mayor and the city council, because he hadn't made an engagement before I brought this to his attention.
Okay, so I think I can say this, and maybe somebody always want to chime in, that our county board commissioners are looking out for us. And, you know, so many times you see several things going throughout the county, and sometimes, you know, because Waukegan, sometimes they think they can rule on their own. But we need those help just as other communities do, so we appreciate you and we thank you for bringing this check, and we look forward to, for more checks to come. Don't we all agree, Alderman? So you want to come right here?
We like checks.
Somebody said we like.
The money's already in the bank, so, you know, I don't present a check unless the money is, her tell me the money's in the bank, go deliver it, I does that. So if you told me, I can deliver the check.
All right, we're going to come right here and take a picture. Alderman, if you would join us, please, as we, we custom. Everybody's in this.
Stand it up here?
Yes.
How much is it?
Oh, it's twenty, yeah, how much is it?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. This check is twenty, April the third, eighteen, the money's already in the bank. Twenty thousand dollars from the city, to the city of Waukegan, Lake County, CDBG, on behalf of the Lake County Board.
Turn her off the camera, Al. Next, we need to bring another zero on it. There you go, you got to go to the city, miss the city.
Hold on, I'm going to try to see all the orders that I have.
All right. Well, thank you ladies, Waukegans?
Well, may I, the city council?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, twenty thousand dollars, we'll leave that right here. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May. Correction, yes, uh, to ratify reappointment of Marge...
Ferruzzi.
Ferruzzi, to the Waukegan Public Library Board. Is Marge here? Hi, there you go, Marge. Hi, stand up, Marge, there you go. Thank you. Thank you. Now, earlier, someone said that the Waukegan Library, uh, had, I don't know if you said the word waived, but rearranged how the fees are gonna be assessed. Uh, I would love, and I think the council would too, to take credit for that, but that is, well, the board and the executive director from the Waukegan Library, so we give you the kudos with, for doing that on behalf of our students and residents of the city of Waukegan. So thank you, Marge, love it. There is a motion on the floor in a second. Uh, roll call, please.
I'm sorry. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried. Item C, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to adopt as presented Resolution eighteen R, uh, two eight A, resolution honoring the life of the Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
You wanna read it?
Resolution eighteen R twenty-eight, Reverend Da, Doctor David Lee Bolton. Whereas Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton was born on January thirtieth nineteen forty-six in Tunica, Mississippi. And whereas Reverend Da, Doctor David Lee Bolton was educated in the Tunica County Public School System, and furthered his education at the College of Lake County, and received his doctorate with Open Arms International Bible College and Seminary in Chicago, Illinois. And whereas Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton worked at Johnson Motors for more than twenty-five years, and Great Lakes Naval Station for eight years. However, his true passion was ministry, particularly street ministry and witnessing. And whereas Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton attempted to help others at every turn, and his infectious and witty sense of humor brightened everyone's day and caused smiles to appear without much effort. To his family and close friends, he was a huge jokester, always providing humor and making everyone laugh. And whereas Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton worked in various facets of ministry under the leadership of Bishop Doctor Solomon Smith at Mount Mariah Christian Center, and Bishop Doctor Gary, and Bishop Doctor Pratius Stern at Peace of God Outreach Ministries. And he was co-prelate of Loving Arms Outreach World Ministries, presiding prelate of Real Men, Real Women Ministries, which was founded in twenty sixteen with his wife, Doctor Sylvia Bolton, as well as helping to establish several churches in the area. And whereas, among his many gifts, Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton had a special gift for music and was a founding member of The Voices of Christ, a quartet singing group. He was also a chaplain for Lake County Corrections. And whereas Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton loved this world on Tuesday, March sixth, twenty eighteen. And whereas Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton leaves to cherish his memory his wife, Waukegan First Ward Alderman, Doctor Sylvia Bolton, along with their six children and twelve grandchildren. And now, therefore be resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby honor the life and legacy of Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton for his distinguished service and dedication to Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the family of Doctor, Reverend Doctor David Lee Bolton at the city council meeting the thirteenth, nineteenth day of March, twenty eighteen.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest, uh, to adopt as presented Resolution eighteen R three six, uh, resolution recognizing Eleanor Merkey for her service to the College of Lake County. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
And the reason, uh, that we are, uh, I thought it was so important is, as you all know, the CLC trustee names, the, um, has also named the new building that is going to be constructed, uh, by, on the old Madison Avenue restaurant location. That expansion will be named the Eleanor Merkey Community Center. So that's one of the reasons. We saw the Zion paper, but I thought that is what I think, uh, worthy of this resolution. And let alone has done, and I didn't know she started in nineteen seventy-eight as the dean over there, to nineteen ninety-eight, so she's certainly put her time in.
Yes, she did.
Along with, uh, know some things that she disliked, but on, uh, but on the other side of that, she gave ideas and resolutions of how to make them better, more importantly for these young minds that in our community. So congratulations, and I'll be delivering that, I'll probably have her come to council meeting, but I want to do within, since they did it their last board, I thought it was fitting that we, that we, um, we have a resolution on our... Thank you very much, Alderman, for helping me with that. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to adopt as presented Resolution eighteen R thirty-seven, resolution declaring May Historic Preservation Month. Uh, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
You wanna read the, uh, read the, do ahead and read it, or we can take...
Resolution eighteen R thirty-seven, May is Historic Preservation Month in Waukegan. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering economic development and local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas historic preservation encourages community reinvestment, saving resources, and promoting socially, culturally, and historically rich communities. Historic preservation fosters a culture of reuse and maximizes the life cycle of all resources through conservation. And whereas Waukegan has recognized the importance of historic preservation with the establishment of a historic preservation program by ordinance number zero-one dash O dash one-four-four on December, December seventeenth, two thousand and one. And whereas to heighten the awareness of historic preservation, it has been incorporated under the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission, which was established in two thousand and three. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals and organizations in helping to preserve the tangible, tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas National Historic Preservation Month, co-sponsored by the city of Waukegan, the Waukegan Historical Society, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, calls on citizens of Waukegan to identify places, properties, and structures important to Waukegan's history. And whereas this year marks the golden jubilee of the Waukegan Historical Society, formed in nineteen sixty-eight by a group of residents to preserve and promote the long and varied history of Waukegan. Today, the society maintains a museum and research library where the rich history of Waukegan is found throughout in the form of exhibits, maps, photographs, and artifacts. And whereas this year marks the two-hundredth anniversary of Illinois statehood, the one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth anniversary of Waukegans incorporation, the fiftieth anniversary of the Waukegan Historical Society, and the seventeenth anniversary of the adoption of the Waukegan Historic Preservation Ordinance. Now therefore be resolved that the city council proclaims May twenty eighteen as Historic Preservation Month in Waukegan, and call upon the people of Waukegan to join the fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented at the city council meeting on the second day of April, twenty eighteen.
We'll forward that over. Uh, is anyone from the preservation? Oh, okay, yeah. The board member, yes, let's get that. Where's so many hats? And we're gonna come around and present this to our newly board member. We'll take a picture right over here. Jay? Where we play here, Jay? Thank you, thank you very much, what you guys do over there, appreciate it. Motion by Alderman Vialobos, second by Alderman Valco, uh, to, to adopt, correction, authorizing a proclamation declaring May as Community Action Month. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio. Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
The motion's passed and carried, and I will deliver that to the function, I think it's next, oh, another board member, you see all those hats you guys, where Commissioner Mary Ross Cunningham is, is a board member, we'll give that to her right now, so you can take to the board. Judiciary Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee met this evening. Uh, first item is a motion to adopt as presented an ordinance establishing permit applications for special events or parades, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Is it roll call, is it all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, next item, motion to adopt as presented a resolution establishing fees for special events applications, and referring the matter to the finance, finance committee for further study and report, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor, uh, to adopt as presented Resolu... Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Next item is a motion to adopt as presented, presented an ordinance amending various sections of the Waukegan Property Maintenance and Housing Code, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor, item D was held over in committee. Um, item E, a motion to approve an ordinance creating a Class C one liquor license subclass for the purposes of selling hard liquor and spirits at gasoline stations. Actually, this was, um, it was five votes against this motion, so...
We bring it up.
In committee, so I don't know, do we still, do we still take a whole council vote on this, corporation council?
Die in committee.
Okay. Or should I motion to the, to deny?
Yeah, to be completely clear, the, the action of the committee was to recommend denial.
Okay, so motion, I can make that motion, motion to deny.
So the vote, the vote would be yes to deny. And the committee was no to not approve, so...
We're gonna make it more confusing if we keep talking about this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So my motion is to deny.
Correct.
To reject, motion to reject.
A motion by Alderman May, uh, second by Alderman Vialobos. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Pass.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye, thank you.
Um, item S was just discussion. Item G, a motion to approve a resolution declaring a default and making demand on a surety bond for the River Glen Development, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Our last item is a motion to approve a license in substantial conformity with that presented with the Waukegan Port District for the display of a directional sign on the city of Wrightaway, on the condition that such signage meets the Waukegan sign ordinance, and such sign permit is issued, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Mozzio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Okay, the motion's passed and carried. Alderman Taylor, Insurance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. A motion authorizing the proper city officials to settle police department workman's compen, compensation claims, C six four five dash one four dash zero zero nine six one dash zero one, for a total of a hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars, and I so move.
Motion by, uh, Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozzio.
Aye.
Alderman Vialobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Alderman Mozzio, Public Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have one item, item A, motion authorize the proper city officials to amend the city ordinance section twenty-one dash one twenty, parking prohibited at all times on specific streets by removing Oak Street West Side from Liberty Street to McKinley, or do we say McKinley?
McKinley. McKinley.
McKinley Avenue from the prohibited parking ordinance. This is down by where Saint Barton and Porres used to be. This helps clean up some things, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Okay, motion's passing, Carrie. Reports and communications. Report, oh, I'm sorry. Tina, are you coming? There we go. Our Director of Finance will come and give us the twenty-seventeen tax year EAV end rate. Thank you.
We did receive from, we did receive from the county our equalized assessed valuation for tax year twenty seventeen, which applies to our eighteen nineteen fiscal year. It did go up nine point two eight percent, so that's very good news. We're at one point one one billion dollars in EAV, which is roughly one-third market value for the entire city properties. The chart that is on board docs and is available gives a history from nineteen ninety-eight to current, and just to give a little perspective, two thousand and eight, the tax year two thousand and eight was our high EAV, and that was at one point six billion. The low we had was twenty fourteen, and that was at nine hundred and forty-one million. So we're heading back in the right direction. The tax rate then for twenty seventeen tax year, which will be collected next year on everyone's tax bills, will be three dollars and seven, seven six cents, so about eight cents, so three dollars and eight cents for next year. So the tax rate itself went down by five percent. There is an inverse relationship between EAV and tax rates because we, the tax levy we filed was less than the EAV increase, that's why the tax rate declined. So again, just to put that in some perspective, two thousand and eight, when we had the highest EAV value that the city had at one point six billion, our tax rate was a dollar forty one. And then twenty fourteen, when we had the lowest EAV we ever had after the crash, our tax rate was three dollars and forty-seven cents. So that was the highest our tax rate had been, was just around three dollars and fifty cents, now we're just above three cents, uh, three dollars. So back in twenty-ten, twenty-oh-eight, we were below two dollars. It would be nice to get back there to where our tax rate was two dollars or less, so hopefully this trend of EAV growth will continue, which helps our tax rate. And I did want to note that this is related to increase in value, not a one-time annexation or something like that. So definitely the right direction.
Thank you. Any questions for Tina? Thank you. And we did hold this over last time for you. We want you to know that, Miss Tina. Thank you. All right, old business. Motion by Alderman May, second by, who is that? Alderman Mozio, correction, Alderman Tempest, to approve zoning calendar twenty-five twenty-one, initial use permit for the one-hundredth solar tower at twenty-fifteen North Lewis Avenue, and that is the Sunset Bowl location. Are there any questions? No, no, it's gonna be on their property. Why isn't it in our property? Yeah, we don't, I mean, we...
We don't control the dump.
The only property right next to it in that vicinity is the Yowie Creek landfill, and
that's controlled by a consortium or a minority member there.
I have a question.
Alderman Villalobos.
Is this gonna be a vote regarding, last time this came up, I believe, excuse me, there was the staff recommendation, which was the Morris, was it the staff recommendation that was a stricter one? Is this what we're looking to do still?
They completed the negotiations based on the direction from the City Council with input from the mayor. And achieved a, I think, probably the best situation we could hope for under these circumstances. Would that be fair to say?
Absolutely. Yes, at the last council meeting, you recall, I asked you to hold this over one more time. We had gotten a revision to the plan from the petitioner, and the staff wanted to spend a little more time reviewing it. We did that, we asked the petitioner's team to come in and talk to us, and we presented them some more changes that we wanted to see, and they agreed to each and every one of those.
We did.
The plan that you have in front of you represents everything that we asked for of them, including all of the landscaping, including all of the paving that we asked for, even when we were out on site, Alderman Tempest and Alderman Newsome and the staff. So the staff is very pleased with this plan. I think the property owner and the petitioner is pleased with it, if I may speak for you, sir. And he's here tonight, as well as the attorney. We worked hard on this together, and they've certainly invested a lot of time, as has the city, and the staff is very pleased with it, and we encourage you to approve it tonight.
But if we had not asked for it, we wouldn't have, would we?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's, uh, motion's passing, Carrie. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Seager, to approve vendor payments dated April second, twenty eighteen, a total amount of one million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and fourteen cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Item B, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Mozio, to approve outdoor special events, sponsor, the sponsor has applied under the directives of the non-city government use, city-owned buildings and venues. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Item C, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Villalobos, to approve regular payroll dated March the thirtieth, twenty eighteen, a total amount of one million, four hundred, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, fifty-four dollars and two cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passing, Carrie. Item D, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman May, to approve local one-fifty safety shoe and tool allowance dated March the thirtieth, twenty eighteen, a total amount of twenty-three thousand, seventy-five dollars, seventy-five dollars. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Motion's passing, Carrie. No ordinances. Closing items. Artemis Tom, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Valco.
Pass.
Alderman Taylor.
Pass.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I just want to take the time to say thank you for everyone, for your prayers, love, and support during my husband's passing. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Uh, I've got, Your Honor, I, I've had three new businesses added to the Second Ward into the city of Waukegan. Uh, I'd like to go ahead and announce their business names and locations. First of all, Legends Men and Women's Wear is located at twelve forty-five South Lewis Avenue. Thank you. Also, Hazel Cromartine, uh, that business deals with tax services. Welcome to the city of Waukegan, and I hope you all do good. Also, located on Tenth and Lewis, um, that, the tax services address is nine thirty-one South Lewis Avenue. That would be Cannelly's old building. They refinished it, and it looks great. It's a, it really looks good, and I met her personally, talked with her, and had a good time. Also, Darnell King, who also opened up, uh, a shop on Tenth and Lewis, Culture Inc., that's nineteen oh four, Tenth Street. It's been a while. That, that building was empty for quite a while. So was Cannelly's old, old building. And so, this is the first time for my announcement for new businesses on the Second Ward, and I look for many more. Welcome, all of you. Thank you. Oh, one, one more thing, one more thing, and I want to put this out. Uh, I want to thank Public Works Department, Mike Hewitt, uh, all of those people over there for helping clean up the alleyways and different areas of the Second Ward. I'm out there all the time, and I'm a little tired of picking up tires and TVs on the parkways. We had six, uh, alleyways cleaned up, and with the help of Public Works Department and the employees. I filled my truck up, plus we had two loads in, in a city dump truck. You know, I, I want to make this specifically clear. If you're gonna dispose of a TV or tires, all you have to do is take them to City Yards. We have it, it's available. And I'm really gonna, really gonna push for this. I, I'm tired of picking up other people's garbage. We have more important things to do besides that. Take some pride throughout the city, and I'm talking to everyone. You know, you see garbage, pick it up. You got garbage cans for that. Garbage pickup days. The garbage trucks come through the yards and rust, there is garbage scattered. Take time out. Pick it up. I do. I don't charge the city. I pick it up. I picked up a brand-new coat over, over off Lewis Avenue, just laying on the street. Size extra-large, if anybody needs it, let me know. But I, not only the Second Ward, but all the wards, take some time out to clean up, whether you're a unit, home, whatever, clean up. I've seen so much of this. I'm in the world every day. It doesn't take that long. I've had volunteers work with me. And I'll confirm you to work, and you're probably complaining about it, but that's okay, too. Just take time out. It makes, it makes everybody's location, you know, their home, their rental property, it helps everybody. Let's get this town cleaned up. Thank you.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Villalobos.
Yes, one thing to say. Mayor, thank you for inviting Reverend Said Richardson to do the invocation today. I went to First Baptist Church two weeks ago when he was getting his recognition as the new senior pastor for the church, and I had an opportunity to speak to him very briefly, but it was a very promising conversation. It appears to me from his bio that he has some experience in like social justice issues in communities, so I look forward to speaking with him more, so I think it was very nice of, of the mayor's office to welcome Reverend Said to Waukegan in the manner that we just did, so thank you for that. And again, if you by chance see this Reverend Said, thank you, and I look forward to speaking with you and working with you more. Thanks so much.
Alderman Newsome.
I'm gonna touch on the garbage a little bit, like Alderman Seager. Just a reminder, there's a time to put your garbage cans out, the day, evening prior to your garbage pickup, and what I'm finding throughout my ward is after the garbage is picked up, there are residents that continue to leave their garbage cans on the parkway for several days. Please pull your garbage cans back in after your garbage is picked up the same day, not three, four days later. Please bring your garbage cans in. You're having a service, they're picking them, picking up your garbage, please pull your garbage cans back in after they're picked up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to speak in regards to TVs, discarded TVs left on the parkway. It seems we're getting a rash of people just leaving their TV on the parkway, the garbage won't pick them up. But you know, put it in your trunk, take it out to Macri Road at City Yards, we have an electronic dumpster there, and you could put it in there, and it's recycled in a proper manner. And I would encourage people, if you've got an old TV, electronics, take them to Public Works, there's an electronic dump there, where you can put them in, in the dumpster, and it sure helped make Waukegan look a lot better. And I think we need to start looking for people that are dumping stuff and putting them out there and giving them an appropriate fine.
I will say this, Alderman, for everybody, we're gonna be doing kind of a marketing campaign, letting people know that you can take your electronics, tires, and...
Textiles.
That's it? Right, the electronics, tires, and we, right? Those are the two big ones?
Those are, yeah, in my experience, the tires and...
And TVs. Tires and televisions are the ones that...
Are we still doing textiles, too, Mayor?
Textiles? Yes?
Mattresses.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna be talking, but right now, well, the mattresses, that's part of your weekly, but Code Enforcement through the Building Commissioner said, Mayor, he informed me today that our Code Enforcement Officers, so Alderman, please be aware, Code Enforcement Officers are gonna be very aggressive in, you know, giving tickets when it comes to these tires and these televisions put on the parkways and are left. The advanced disposal, our contract does not allow for that to happen, but we, it is free, I'm gonna use the word free of charge, to bring them to Public Works.
Macri Road.
On Macri Road.
Mayor, the only thing that I would caution, 'cause it's happened, not to me personally, but I've taken care of it for a few residents. I'll get a call, Alderman, you know, Mo, somebody just dropped six tires off on my parkway, somebody dropped a TV off, and I just go get it myself and take care of it just easier. But I just want us, that does, we, happen, I get calls from some senior residents that have told me, you know, they're like, what do you want me to, I'm like, I'll come get the tires, don't worry about it. So just so, just so the Code Enforcements can, I mean, you know.
And one thing we are doing though, Code Enforcement, the Code Enforcement Department and the frontline supervisor, Public Works Department have a great communication where they, hey, there's something there. You know, most of our Public Works and Code Enforcement folks, they know where the problems are at. I will caution you that. So I won't have to worry about that, they understand that, and there's something that's going on, well, you know, Public Works is out there, they're doing it now. But we're just finding repeat offenders in certain areas and particularly households that we just can't continue to put resources of the city to go to that same address over and over and over again. That's why we gotta get a little tough, so you learn to get some, some calls and if there's anything that you need to get taken care of or that's out of the ordinary, feel free to call the Building Commissioner and myself and we'll work with you. But it's just becoming, you know, too habitual for everybody to, you know, just absorb.
Your Honor, the esteemed Alderman Tempest used to have a saying, pay as you learn.
Pay as you learn, well, yeah, so I just want to, I want everyone to, all the Aldermen to be aware, so if you get the phone calls, know one of the reasons why we're doing it, but we're really trying to encourage, that's why we're gonna do a marketing campaign of what can go to Public Works and what cannot. Because I think these tires and television is just too much.
Yeah.
It's too much right now for us all to know to handle. With that being said...
Alderman May.
Alderman May. I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say pass. I apologize, Alderman May.
I'm just kidding. I just have one quick thing. I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, for working with ComEd on reducing our energy output here in the city of Waukegan and just let residents know, if you go to ComEd's website, you can also have them come to your house and they will do an energy efficiency assessment of your house. They'll bring you LED light bulbs, they'll change out your shower head to an energy efficient free. They will do this for free. They will come to your house and do an energy assessment for your house. I've had some residents take advantage of it, so take advantage of it. When they made the fee to deal, they gave a lot of money to ComEd to provide energy efficiency savings to the residents of Illinois. So ComEd's website has the information on there or you can contact me and I'd be happy to share it with you. So Mayor, thank you for getting involved with that for the city facilities. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna add one more thing for those, your street, this, any wooden pole, any wooden pole in the city of Waukegan belongs to Commonwealth Edison. Sometimes those lights go out, we agree? You don't have to call Public Works. You can go right online and you can put the request in yourself. I do this every day. It takes them between five to seven days to come out. Here's a secret. Know the LED lights, they're gonna be doing a thousand, well, they're only doing it in targeted areas. If you call at a light pole that is outside of that target area, they're gonna change it anyway. I'm gonna be putting some things on our website of that, of the email address for you can go, all you have to do is just put the name, address, location. I have it on my phone today. I, on Friday night, just to let you know I'm getting a little older, on Friday night, I drive throughout the city and that's what I do for about an hour and a half.
Mama, he needs to be home when the streetlights come on. That's what I thought.
All right, so, and we'll work with our media, with the media and everybody to make sure we can get, please help us out with that, that expedite that to your time period. With that being said, motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Mozio to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.